So Roseanne's not coming?
Oh, I don't know.
Downstairs witnessing.
Witnessing.
And Dale and Jamie are out doing the same.
All right, I guess we just gotta assume we're on. All right, good evening. Welcome to the March 21st Planning Board meeting. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda, or next on the agenda is public comments. Any public comments? Hearing none, I will close the public comments at 7:01. Next is review and approval of minutes, minutes of January 24th. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 24th, 2017.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made in second, any discussion?
So I wasn't here, but in my review of the minutes, page eight, line 36. Says Anna Butter, we don't have the name.
I'm sorry, page eight, you're talking about the January 24th.
I thought you just said February 14th.
No, January 24th.
Sorry, end of the game.
Two sets of minutes.
Okay.
Anything on the January 24th?
You're good?
No, I had nothing on that one, that's it.
Anybody else have any comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
I abstain. I wasn't here, that's why.
All right, so next we're on to the February 14th minutes. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Val?
So that's page eight, line 36.
The Anna Butter.
Anna Butter, but we don't have the name?
Well, hang on, let's read it.
Okay.
No, it doesn't.
Anna Butter.
You're not on page eight.
I don't remember who that was.
It was a taller, bigger gentleman, if I remember right.
Mr. McDonald?
Doesn't know.
Well, we can, we can...
I think he announced.
No, he, they came in after that.
Somebody just asked, thought that the owner of the property, meaning Mr. Cheney, should be there. Does anyone recall in the audience who that was? I know, I, I thought it might have been you, Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, there you go.
Was it you?
I think it was, it was...
Was it?
You asked.
So...
Because I ain't coming late.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Mr. McDonald came up to the microphone.
And then on page nine, line 33, so Roseanne making a comment in light of that, they could brick the front and back, that would be a great improvement, and put clapboards. I'm assuming she meant on the sides?
On the sides of the building. 33.
Yeah, that's all I have.
And put clapboards.
Building.
Any other comments? Janice, you, me, and Val have to recuse ourselves.
So you're not gonna be able to vote?
So we're not gonna be able to vote on it, because you two will be the only two that can vote, and it's not a majority of the people here.
Yep.
So, I wish I'd seen that. All right, so we're gonna have to table that to the next meeting. Next is, I'm gonna take it out of order, Peter Nelson. We have a vacancy, because Ezra resigned. So Peter, fill out an appointment, an application to become a permanent member. So I would entertain a motion to accept Peter as a permanent member.
I'll make the motion to accept Peter Nelson to fill in the remainder of the term for Planning Board of Ezra?
Yep.
To fill his position.
Is there a second? I'll make the second.
And should I mention for the three-year term?
Well, it's to fulfill the remaining of Ezra's term.
Which expires March 28th. I'll second that. Any discussion? Anybody out in the audience have any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Peter, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, Peter. You're permanent now.
Congratulations, Peter. Isn't it been worth coming all these meetings as the alternate?
Now you can't get out of it.
Now that you're a full-pledge member.
All right, and before we go too far, I guess I need to make an announcement that Roseanne, Amy, and Dale are all away excused. They're working the recount, there's a recount for the town council position. And hopefully Jane will show up. I haven't heard from Jane, has, have you heard from Jane?
I haven't heard from her.
Okay, okay. Election of officers, want to uptake, take up the election of officers?
Sure, I'd like to nominate Eric Bottomen for chairman.
Second.
Anybody else wanna throw the hats in the ring?
I'm, I'm an alternate.
He's a newbie.
I'm not kicking you out yet.
All right, yeah, I like that, yeah, next year.
Watch out next year, right, Peter?
All right, and no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
We have some alternate positions open. We have alternate positions open.
And vice chair, any nominations of vice chair?
I'll make a motion to nominate Val Shelton for vice chair.
I will, second, second. Anybody else interested in running, a strong campaign? Hearing none? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Congratulations, Val. All right, Peter, we've taken care of. All right, on to the first order of regular business, which is Kim and John Parrott, Parrott Family Revocable Trust of 2013. Before we do the public hearing, you need to accept the application?
Yes, we do.
Would you recommend accepting that the application is complete?
I would recommend acceptance of the application is complete, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the application?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, it all, any discussion?
Well, which one are we working on, both of them at the same time?
No, the two separate public hearings listed, so we're doing the Parrott one first.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the application, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, so we've accepted the application. So now we'll go to a public hearing for an application for subdivision at 7 Eagle Drive, tax map R2 lot 36-9-3 in the I-1 zone. The proposal is for a minor subdivision, which involves subdividing out the building footprint, driveway, and sidewalk to be retained by the current homeowners. Remaining land to be conveyed to the Hill at Moody Point Homeowners Association in accordance with the revised final site plan for lots 10-2 through lots 10-16 and lots 9-1 through 9-4. Oh, that's Plan D 21-471, the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds dated September of 1991. So we'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public have anything to say, in the audience, anything to say about this particular public hearing? Okay, great. Diane, do you want, just wanna walk us through this real quickly?
Yeah, I'll give you a little bit of background, and this is the second step of a two-step subdivision site plan review process that was approved by the planning board back in 1991, when the original subdivision plan was approved. And the idea was that there would be a carving out of the individual lots within the subdivision, which would then be sold. And then upon completion of the construction of the house and driveway, there would be a second step where the applicant would come back to the planning board and the town and get an approval to carve out, if you will, the footprint of the building and the driveway. In a sense, it was a zero-lot subdivision, and this, of course, is part of Moody Point, and as you may recall, Moody Point was designed under the old alternative design subdivision regulations, which provided the planning board the opportunity to waive some of the setback requirements, lot size requirements, density requirements. So essentially, and several years has gone by since this was approved, it was approved in 1991, and the, there are two owners out at Moody Point who've just recently built houses, and they're ready now to close on the property, I guess, and get the second step of the process approved by the town so they can go forward and convey the remaining land to the homeowners association, and...
So this is basically housekeeping from an approval that was done in 1991?
It's housekeeping from a previous approval, and it's all kind of embedded in condominium law, which I'm not an expert in. But we have reviewed this with legal counsel, and he has assured us that this is indeed a subdivision, needs to come before the full board. And once it's approved, then they'll be free to go ahead and, and take care of that last step, so they can move into their new home. Have you moved in yet?
Or are you?
Okay.
Okay, so having heard all that, does any board members have any questions, concerns?
Just have a general question, how does that impact the tax assessment?
They're assessed at the full.
So they're two separate assessments, one to the condominium association?
It's not a condominium.
Oh, it's not a condominium.
This is not a condominium. These are single-family homes, the...
But the home, the land, the common land is held by the homeowners association, which is embedded in condominium law. That's my understanding.
Yeah, the homeowners association is not under the condominium act. They do have a separate homeowners association that will maintain all of the land around the house, and then Eagle Drive itself is owned by the homeowners association, which is a private road that's maintained by the homeowners association.
So the tax assessment of the land is picked up by the homeowners association?
Newmarket doesn't tax association land, they embed the value of it within each individual home. Because under state law, the, the towns are required to assess it market value. So they, when you think about the value of the home, intrinsic in that is whatever the common land is, whether it's to that, associated to that house, or let's say the Moody Point Community Association land, you know, that provides the water, the sewer, the walking trails, the dock. That's not all separate, that's not, Newmarket elects not to tax that separately.
So there's no, there's no net tax assessment change?
That's correct.
Thanks, Val, I appreciate that explanation.
It's out of my realm.
Yeah, but I think you hit the nail on the head, it's a housekeeping issue, because we can't not approve the plan, because this is required as part of the original subdivision approval, that this had to be done.
Right.
And then they just, but this, and then a new plan had to go on record, and then this additional excess land gets added to the association.
Any other questions? It's a good question, Peter.
No, yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I want to entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Five to nothing, the motion passes. Congratulations.
So did we get anything back from you folks? We'll send you a notice of decision.
Oh, okay.
Just so that, you know, if you have a question. But then, of course, we will sign, the chairman will sign the plan, and the plan will get recorded in the registry of deeds, so there's your permanent record.
So we have the Mylars now?
We have the Mylars and the Coffees, yes. You said survey is taken care of, that. If I can find them.
If we have them, if we have them, yeah, okay, all right, thank you. All right, so...
You can sign them tonight.
So that's, next item is Malia Hughes TTE Moody Point Nominee Trust. And again, we need to accept the application. Diana, is the application complete? So I entertain a motion for acceptance of the application.
So moved.
Second.
Second by, motion by Val, seconded by Janice. All right, now we will open up a public hearing for an application for subdivision at 5 Eagle Drive, tax map R2 lot 36-9-2 in the I-1 zone. The proposal is for a minor subdivision, which involves subdividing out the building footprint, driveway, and sidewalk to be retained by the current homeowners. The remaining land to be conveyed to the Hill at Moody Point Homeowners Association in accordance with the revised final site plan for lots 10-2 through 10-16 and lots 9-1 through 9-4 on Plan D 21-471 in the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds dated September of 1991. I will open up the public hearing first. Anybody in the audience have anything to say regarding this public hearing? Okay, any board members have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:16, 7:17, and I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, and any discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations, that one passes also. Next on the agenda...
I just wanted to clarify that the town will be recording of the plans, that if you paid us the filing fee up in, upfront, you'd also pay for the so-called L-CHIP fee. So, you know, at some point, probably later this week, we'll record the plan, and we can make a copy of the recorded plan available to you when it comes back to the town.
Okay. So I should just come up to the office at some point next week?
I'm gonna try to sign the Mylars tonight, because I'm leaving town for 10 days, so if I sign them tonight, then they can be recorded this week, and you can call Diane and...
There are three paper copies as well of the plans to stay with the town, and I don't know why it needs to go to public work, so I think, you know, there would be a copy of that available to you as well.
Okay, so I need both of them, the Hugheses as well as ours?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
If you could give me a call, we can coordinate it. Thank you.
Okay, next is the Real Estate Advisors/DR Lemieux Builders, Inc. And again, now, this is a new application, so I believe we need to accept the application, Diane, first?
Yes, we do, and Mr. Smith is just arriving, so why don't we give him a minute to get situated?
Sure. Is he, are you recommending acceptance as an application being complete?
Well, there's a couple of things that I need to get, a couple of housekeeping measures that need to be addressed, and I was hoping Mr. Smith would be able to sign the, the application where there's certification required on the letter notification. And there's a couple of other things, too.
Okay. It's a start, yes.
Get set up.
Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Chairman Bottom.
You walked in just in time.
I saw the other applicant, I thought that was time. Neighbors as well as the board can read it.
Good to have him, okay, sure. Just be patient for one minute, please.
Yeah, take your time.
I guess I don't have my, one of the, what we need to have you do is sign one of the pages in the application, the certification on the Butter notification. I know that you gave us a certified list, it just didn't get signed. So that needs to be...
Could you just sign that, please?
Thank you. That's one of the items. Okay. If I may?
You sure, okay. So now we're talking about accepting the application, the completeness of the application.
And, oh, here's a copy for you, Christian, if you want to look at it.
Oh, thank you.
I have reviewed the application against the major site plan review checklist, and there's a couple of items that I wanted to... That isn't the one, they look identical. There are a couple of items that needed to be addressed, and I just wanted to bring them to your attention. There was an overpayment, here it is, here's my copy, good. There was an overpayment on the application fee, so we will be sending...
What? Why were you...
It's unheard of. My client will be very happy.
So we're gonna send your client a check for $125 to correct that error. We already took care of the signature, so we're all set with that. Mr. McDonald had mentioned at the last meeting, there was an easement across his property, I don't see, oh, there is over there. So we'd like to make sure that that easement is reflected on the subdivision, or the site plan.
It is actually shown on the existing conditions plan.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, is it actually, what kind, it's a right-of-way easement, and is there...
It's a pass and repass access easement, yes.
Does it say that it's for access, though? Is it, is it delineated on the plan as, you know, showing where it is?
Yep, right, and I think even meets and bounds description.
Okay.
Right in the existing conditions page.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that was covered, because that was mentioned. Okay, going down my list, I'm on page two. One of the parking spaces needs to be designated ADA space, so that needs to be taken care of. There's a need to have some kind of a bicycle facility shown, and I think under the, when we had our TRC meeting, you had indicated that you would add something to the plan. I couldn't find it.
Right up here next to the existing garage.
Okay.
Yeah, proposed bike wreck.
So we're all set with that.
Yep.
I see that there was a note added to the plan that shows or designates handicap accessibility for the walkways going, leading from the parking lots. I wanna make sure that the access from the parking lot to that walk, to the sidewalk, because there's a sidewalk along the front, is also ADA accessible. And what we've asked applicants to do in the past is to provide a general note that all site improvements will meet ADA requirements.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and the intent of that sidewalk is it is flush and it's going to be line-stripped, as it...
Okay, and I thought, so we couldn't tell from the...
Yep, understood.
So that was one item. Okay, the whole idea of solid waste facilities, Mr. Wilkinson on our planning board had suggested an idea at the last planning board meeting, which I thought was a great idea, of having some kind of a area set aside for these recycling storage containers.
Kind of the roll-off containers, yes.
And be rolled off, and then brought to the curb on pickup days, and then brought back to its...
We, we thought that was a great idea as well, Diane, and we have revised the plans to reflect that.
Okay, and I, I just wanted to make sure that, and if that's the case, are you talking in that upper right-hand corner?
Correct.
Or are you talking about down below where it might be?
They'll, they'll still be in an enclosure, and I think when we spoke with Mr. Wilkinson at the design review, his, and I can't recall if his indication was that the, the pickup crews would walk up there and get them, or each individual unit owner would have to wheel them down to the curb at Grape Street, either way is fine.
So if you could clarify in the plan how that's gonna be handled with the note, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Outdoor lighting?
None proposed, aside from the safety lighting at the doors.
Okay, you've provided us with a list of waivers, I assume that was the same waivers that were acted upon at the last...
Yes, and in actuality, it's, it's a single waiver, just kind of a long-winded description of why we feel it's, it's viable.
Okay, and the town departments have had a chance to review and comment on this project, and I'll be following up with them to make sure that everyone's all set with the new plan. But I just wanted to indicate that we have, this project has gone through a technical review process. And the other item was, I wanted to just point out that there will be a driveway permit required by Rick Malosky, our public works director.
Yep.
And with that, and with those modifications we just talked about, I would recommend that we accept the application for, for review at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to accept the application?
I don't have a copy of a site plan in my package.
Okay. I apologize.
Let's see.
Do you like to borrow?
No, I think I have, I think we all have the same thing.
Yeah. None of us have... None of us have in our package, I believe. We have the existing condition, we don't have sheet one of five.
Well, I have two extra copies here, and I hope that that's...
I think the intent is, the existing conditions is one of five, and the remaining site plan details appear on the parking and paving plan, great, and drainage.
Okay. Okay, so we have one of one.
But what are you planning to record at the registration? Just the actual site plan and get signed?
That's fine, we can create one of the sheets into a recordable format.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd have to do that at some point, absolutely. So, Mr. Smith, could you, I know it's kinda odd, but could you, so there's no confusion later on, have the existing conditions plan labeled one of five?
Absolutely.
Have it like that, so that, you know, years from now, somebody's looking at it, they...
You bet.
They understand.
Yep, I can have just that update that.
Or one of six, plus a recordable. Yes, okay.
And the site plan will list all of these notes on the site plan?
Yep.
So be six total sheets. So with those proposed changes, we, is there a motion to accept the application as complete?
I move to accept the application as complete.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made, is there any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the application, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, so the next step now is to open the public hearing for an application for site plan at 1R Grape Street, tax map U2 lot 206 in the I-3 zone. The proposal is to build a four-unit residential condominium development with associated parking utilities and drainage features. So, Mr. Smith, thank you for coming. This is basically the same project we talked about a lot last year.
Very similar, yes.
I wasn't at the last meeting, and I know there was some discussion about this. So, for the sake of clarity, I guess, would you walk us through what the changes are between this and what the other plan was that was before us?
Absolutely. So largely, the, the changes are just a slight modification in the walkways to the units, because as opposed to having them all staggered in a northeasterly direction, Mr. Lemieux has configured it such that there'll be two, kinda jutting out to the east in the middle, and two back section, or excuse me, two units, which will be slightly recessed from that. He, he took that information from some of the previous hearing minutes, and we realized that some of the Butters felt that that was a more consistent look compared to the rest of the, the rest of the neighborhood, because oftentimes you'll have a small historic building, and then the add-ons, you know, would look like that, and I can show you... I'm sorry, as, as difficult as it might...
Hey, hold on, hold on, Bob, hold on, hold on.
I, I just wanted to...
No, Bob, hold on, hold on. To speak, you have to come up to the microphone. Let him speak first, then you can come up to the microphone, okay?
Well, I, I can't see the diaphragm.
Oh, okay, all right, that's fine, but come up here and ask, that's fine.
As difficult as it can be, if he could just stand on the side. Yeah, my apologies. And for the board, this was virtually the same architectural rendering that was presented at the design review, and as you can see, it does depict the, the middle two units projecting out slightly, the end units recessed, and Mr. Lemieux, DR Lemieux Builders, who has the option on this property now, has agreed to brick and mortar the protruding face of the inner two units on the front side of the building. Again, I think that, that came out of some of his review of the minutes and comments from both the board members and the residents around us at the previous proceedings. So just to remind the board, we tried to keep the drainage as consistent as we could to the previous iteration, and by that, essentially, the lot drains in this direction. We're trying to keep all the water going in a similar direction as it did in the previous existing condition. We collect everything in a small swale here, down in this location, there's a small berm gonna be built up to make sure that the water reaches the rather large bio-retention pond in the back, and then the remaining land, which is here, and some of the adjacent properties, will just sheet flow over. And again, if you recall, we worked through with the reviewing engineer for the town, a bio-retention swale, or a bio-treatment swale, which will then just provide some treatment and convey the water down to the existing catch basin in the street, as it, as it does now. However, again, we're proposing a little back berm, you know, where there's any question with regard to water potentially... where there's any question with regard to water potentially spilling over onto the neighbor to the west. Aside from that, it's much the same, except for as the planner mentioned, we have revised to eliminate the proposed dumpster. We now have four of the large roll-off cans screened, and one will be assigned to each unit. And again, you know, they will either be brought to the curb by the unit owners or the unit renters. And that I should mention as well, which is kind of important, Mr. Lemieux intends to retain ownership of this and rent these units out. He has another property in town where that's the case and feels very comfortable with that. Same number of plantings, the screening plantings along the side. Snow storage stays the same as Diane mentioned earlier. The fire suppression, these will be sprinkled. And it's our understanding from the fire department that they will actually hook up to the Hydranon Beach Street and bring the line in the back or from the north to the south in the event of an actual fire in one of these units. So, by and large, those are the changes. I mean, the utilities stayed virtually the same. Site grading stayed virtually the same. And just to remind the board, the waiver that we're looking for is the subdivision, excuse me, site plan review regulation, section 3.07(c)(3). And that requires that not more than 10% of the surface area, impervious surface area, receive treatment from a single BMP. And of course, what that would mean in this particular property is that we'd have to create six different locations to treat stormwater. It just seems highly inefficient and very disconnected. You know, you can see the property to the west or southwest has a very open area right now, ideal place for a bio-retention pond. Bio-retention ponds are extremely good nutrient removal. And in all of the iterations of the required storm events, we do show a reduction in peak flow off-site, both to the west and to the existing catch basin in the street. And I guess with that, I'll entertain any questions the board may have.
Any board members have questions for Mr. Smith?
I do.
Go ahead, Val.
So, can you take us through the topography changes here? I see that you're grading down from the parking lot area, be 43.
That's correct.
Moving down to 42.
43 here. I'm sorry, can you step aside? And the 42 valve will run down across the drive aisle, right about there. You've got the 43 contour. It's just kind of laid out a little odd right now with the existing gravel. So, the existing 43 makes some funny moves in here. We basically just created so that there's going to be nice sheet flow in the direction of that swale.
And then the abutters are at 42, is that correct?
Let's see.
To the right?
43...
To the right?
It appears they are at about 42, plus minus.
The butters to the right. You're talking...
Oh, to the right.
You're referring to sheet feeding that.
Yeah, this is a 43. So, that water will come down again. There's the 42 contour. We're at 42 and a half feet right here. So, that... The water coming from here will simply sheet off, get into this swale, and ultimately reach the catch basin.
But it appears the beginning of the swale is at 42.
42... 42.7, but yes, you're correct. Up here, we pull the 42 back. Up around here, you've got a 42.7 high spot right there. Water will go from this point north into this swale and then south into the other swale towards the basin. But yes, we've got this water coming in. It will just sheet across as it does now and get into that swale and reach the catch basin, right?
So, I guess what I'm not seeing is, and maybe it's just the plan is so small, that the neighboring property is 42 feet, correct?
Which property are we talking about?
To the right.
Forty-three.
Because you keep talking about sheet feeding, but if...
Yeah, this is actually a 43-foot contour right here. And these are 43-foot contours.
Okay.
So, those are kind of brake lines, and those will then come down in this...
So, is the right-hand side of the swale actually below 42 feet?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. That's one question. I can't see that on the phone.
Yeah.
Any other board members have any questions, Mr. Smith, at the moment? Any...
Do we have copies of the written ones?
Yeah. Did you get them in the package? I can make them for you, Val, if you'd like.
Well, that's okay. What was the...
I have a copy here, Val. I'm happy to give you some.
It could've came in after we picked up our stuff, too.
Any... Anybody in the audience have any questions? Please come up and identify yourself, please.
I'm Peter Menagan. My wife Dorothy is owner of record for a property at 20 Beach Street, which is to the right side of the lower right side of the plan that we're looking at here. And I'm seeking a bit of clarification, really, on what was just related concerning adjacent elevations. And would I be correct in understanding that to the... On the properties closer to Beach Street, that the elevations there are at 43 feet, whereas along the driveway, within the area of the plan, the elevation is 42 feet?
Is that correct?
Yes, it looks like the back part of that property on the lower right-hand corner drains onto this driveway and will continue to. Is that correct?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions, sir?
That's why I was asking for the retention pond, that it was lower.
Yes.
But it didn't look that way.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Just give us a moment.
Sure, absolutely.
Do you want to compare that to the original request?
I'll ask. I have a question.
Sure, could you just give your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Janice Lamontaine. I live at 3 Grape Street, which is right on the side there of the driveway.
Yep.
On the left side.
Yep.
I planted some trees on my property line, and I really can't see where that line of my property line is on this diagram, you know? I mean, there's a green space, and half of it is my property and half of it is yours.
Yeah, the property line is where we stopped. The property line is right there. It's that heavy line, basically where I stopped the shading on the plan.
And this is my house, right?
Correct.
Yeah, your driveway. This is your driveway.
Oh, I see. So, I have... So, this is mine here?
That's correct.
Well, I would say that the property line comes through the back corner of your driveway.
Yeah, there's this heavy line right here.
But I have a... This green space is part of it is my property.
No, that's all local property.
Okay. When the guys did the...
Could you please come over to the mic? Just a minute, could you please come over to the mic?
I can't think of the word when they came and they did, you know, when they had the little thing? Survey. I had them show me where my property line ended and where the other one began. And it's... There's a green space, my driveway, and then there's some green. And that half of that is my property, and the other half is his. That they actually marked it for me.
Okay.
I planted some trees there.
How long ago did you have that done, just recently?
Trees?
Yeah. How long you talked about this survey?
Last... 2015, I put the trees in. And I didn't do the survey. I saw the guy out there, and I asked him to show me which... where my property line ended. Because I wanted to be, you know, I knew something was coming. So, I wanted to know where my property line ended. And that's where I planted some, like, little arborvitae's that are still pretty short along that line. That's what I'm concerned about. I mean, my property line doesn't end my driveway. There's some grass beyond my driveway.
And according to this plan, in the front corner, there's a little bit of land beyond your driveway.
Yeah.
The actually property line goes through a corner of your driveway and then continues on to a corner on this property. So, according to this plan, which was done by Bill Doucet, did the survey, right?
Okay.
There's no green space there.
Right.
Let's see, when he did the existing conditions.
I can't tell you where the trees are. But you can see very clearly, Doucet picked up existing property monuments at both ends of that particular property boundary.
Yeah, I don't think there's much disputing where the boundary is.
Right.
I don't know where the trees are relative to the boundary.
I don't either, Mr. Chairman.
This is the house, it's like crosshatched.
Yeah.
And this is the driveway that's marked out.
Well, that's a driveway.
So, I actually...
The corners I marked. The corners I marked.
No, I know.
But we don't know where. Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And that's... I was told that when I bought the house.
Well, so, here's the question to ask. The question to ask is, are they going to have to excavate or do dirt work in that area and disturb your trees?
Okay. I'm going to ask the question you told me to ask. Are they... Are you going to be excavating in that area and disturbing that grassy area next to my driveway?
Yes, that's where the swale is. Absolutely, that's where it is.
That's where the swale...
Now, it sounds like those trees may not be on your property. If they're to the right of your driveway, they don't show on the plan, so...
See, but this is the thing. I specifically asked the surveyor to show me where the property line was. And he said, "This is your property line." So, that's why I planted those trees there, and I spent a lot of money on those trees, you know? Because I was told that was my property line.
That...
And then I was also told that when I purchased the house.
I'm not disputing that, but that doesn't mean that what they told you was right. And I don't know, based on this plan, I don't know whether those trees are on your property or not. They may not be.
Okay.
Mr. Botterman, Mr. Lemieux has just indicated to me that in the event that those trees are in the way of what would be proposed grading, he's happy to take them out. And now, we're creating a very small berm on that side, uphill, obviously, of the center line of the drainage swale. And he would be happy to replant those in their existing locations. It looks to me as if they are on Mr. Lemieux's property that he has under agreement, they would be on the berm, which would be fine.
And it looks pretty straightforward. There's iron pipes at both corners, so they should be able to tell exactly where the property line is. It should be pretty easy to tell, so...
Can you just make a note of that on your landscape plan?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, just in the event that neighbors' trees need to be disturbed for construction of the swale, they will be replanted at the top of the berm.
And can I just ask one more thing?
Of course.
If and when you start construction, if you get approvals, would you just mark that out and have a conversation with them before you do any work?
Absolutely.
I mean, that's just a neighborly thing to do? Please, okay?
Yep.
I was apparently misled about my property.
Yes, I don't know, but yeah, there may be some confusion where that is. But on these plans, it's pretty straightforward. And I mean, everybody here knows Bill Doucet. Bill Doucet is a very thorough surveyor with no reason to think that there's anything wrong with his plan. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments, sir? Please come on up.
My name is Bob McDonald. Live at 1 Grape Street, which is the house to the right of the drive... at the entrance of the driveway. At the last meeting that I attended, I requested from the town planner the drainage plan, which I've reviewed, and I'm satisfied with what the people want to buy, Mr. Chaney's, that the elevations look proper at 43 where I am, and it's going across the driveway to the right, to the left, storm drain. And I have, and my wife has spoke to the potential owners about the easement. And that has... That will be on the plan, as they said.
Great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, any other comments?
Bob? Bob Mede, owner of 79 Grape Street. The last discussion, again, just for clarification, we had some discussion about the garage on would it be parking? Would it be modified to be vehicle space? Because we understand that each bay is narrow. It's more for carriage than for a car. And there was just some discussion about that, maybe even taking it down or anything like that. I see on the plans right now, it says garage to stay. I just wanted to follow up and see if there was any further changes or discussion made on that existing garage.
I don't believe there's been any further discussions on that. I believe we're just saying the garage is to remain at this point.
Yeah, and I can clarify slightly, Mr. Chairman, that the intent of D.R. Lemieux Builders is that that will basically be converted into storage units, one for each of the units, one for each of the dwelling units. So, it is to remain. And that's what we understood was the desire of the neighbors, was that they wanted to see that kind of historic structure stay. But it is not intended to be converted into garage space. It's really not, you know, big enough. It's... Yeah.
Thank you. Sir, come on up, please.
Just following up on this particular subject under discussion. We've got four proposed residential units. My recollection is that there are, I think, six units as the garage structure is presently divided. And there had been a suggestion, frankly, that perhaps the interior walls in the garage could be altered so that you'd end up with four units that were sufficiently spacious to accommodate vehicles. And the reason why I raised that as a possibility is I think, to some extent, we have some concerns about the adequacy of the parking for four units. And it's my recollection also that there has been no provision for any spaces for any visitors there. So, was... Could you entertain any further discussion on that particular suggestion so that you'd end up with some actual parking in that garage structure?
Yeah, I would tell you right off the top of my head, I'll let the applicant answer, but from our perspective is to use that garage for parking, you would have to increase the amount of impervious area on the lot. You'd have to pave it to get access to it, which exacerbates any runoff issues with drainage.
And in addition to that, Mr. Chairman, while the interior walls, no doubt, could probably be reconfigured, the actual exterior walls and the garage doors are separated by brick and mortar. It would be quite a challenge to try and revise that to four, you know, drive-in units or drive-in garage bays. But the idea is evidently the N2 units will have two of those spaces each for storage, and the two interior units will have one apiece. There is, I guess, as I understand, it's six entry doors into that at this point. And specific to the parking, the parking meets the letter of the town's code.
Correct, two parking spots per unit.
Two parking spots per unit, that's correct.
Anybody have any other questions, comments? Okay, so I think the first order of business would be to talk about the waiver request?
I don't have...
Yes?
Oh, I thought.
I thought she gave you...
I thought we had asked from Chris.
You can have this.
He has my other one.
Oh, okay.
I don't have one for the file. I need one for the file.
So, this is the same waiver request that we had approved previously? Or we had discussed previously, I guess, in the previous application.
Yeah, so Peter may want to make a motion.
Right, yes.
Make a motion to approve the waiver to the site plan review regulation, section 3.07(c)(3), which is item one on this... And do we have... Is that the only?
There's only one.
That's a waiver. That's a waiver request.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second it.
Any discussion? Comments, hearing none, all in favor of granting the waiver, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? So, we passed the waiver. Now, what's the pleasure of the board on the application? Do we have to talk about that of the...
Well, I think last time we reviewed the application, I prepared several conditions, recommended conditions of approval. And one of them, the last one, was the whole issue on design, the architectural design. I think that we were at the point where I certainly was ready to recommend approval subject to the architectural issues being agreed to and resolved. And I think from a technical standpoint... And I think from a technical standpoint, the only real remaining issue is the architectural issue. And I guess I'd like to have some commentary from the board as to whether they are in agreement with what's been proposed, if it meets and satisfies the provisions of our requirements. And if so, I will come forward at our next meeting with the conditions of approval outlined so that we can review them with an eye to a conditional approval, if that's what the board chooses.
One thing I remember, were we waiting on back elevations too? Was on this one, I can't remember if that, no?
It was requested, but no, it wasn't something that was required.
So what's the board's take on the, on the renderings?
My take was, based on the neighbors that had spoken previously, were more in favor of, in the way we left it in the, in the notes, in the meeting notes that were approved, was the more brick, the better. But if we don't hear anything from any, if all the neighbors are satisfied with the existing look and architectural design of the building, I'd be satisfied with the amount of work that was put on there. But I think the idea was, could any additional brick be added, yes or no? And I would just say barring any other, you know, complaints from the neighbors that it doesn't somehow fit, it's at least a step in the right direction above, past where we were several months ago when we looked at it.
Okay, Glenn?
No, I like the, I like the new design. I, I mean, definitely, from my point of view, I went through the neighborhood and looked, and it meets much better with that, and I think actually adds to the, to the overall configuration.
Janice?
I agree with Peter and Glenn, and I think that the new person who's taken over the project, I mean, who's, has this purchase and sales agreement on the project, has worked very closely with the abutters and has tried to accommodate all their concerns, and I would go along with the project, the design.
Okay, Val?
I would agree, we haven't heard anything regarding the architectural, you know, issues this evening from any abutters.
I feel the same way. So, Dan, we had a, we have a, had a computer issue whereby we don't have access to the conditions at this point, right?
I had a new computer installed last June, and we also had a new email server just installed. And I've lost a large chunk of my emails. And so I need to work with our IT department to be able to recreate that document. Unless somebody has brought the, their folder from the last iteration, I might have those.
Do you have the conditions of approval memo?
There were ten condition, there were eight conditions of approval. There was one that was submitted in March, April, and then there was a follow-up in May.
No, I don't think so, Val, because I don't believe I was at the latter hearings, the April and May hearings. I don't believe I attended those with, with Alex. But I mean, you know, the applicant would be happy to accept a conditional approval based on, on what Diane produces. That's, that's not an issue. You know, there was nothing earth-shattering in there, I do recall that, so. In lieu of having exacting conditions, it seems like that's all we're down to. If you see it fit not to, you know, spend another month on this, would be happy to accept whatever Diane produces.
I would feel more comfortable in going back and finding those conditions, updating them, revising them, comparing the plans with what, you know, the final engineering review was, and, you know, package it in the correct way so that it can be properly voted on at the next meeting, if that's what the board feels most comfortable with.
I feel for the applicant, because I know it's probably costing you five hundred or a thousand dollars to be sitting here tonight. And I understand that we don't have them.
I don't have, I can't.
We don't, I know that we don't have them before us because of technical issues.
So.
Well.
I'm, I'm kind of of the mind that if the applicant's willing to accept the conditions.
I probably have it somewhere. Can't tell you right now.
I agree with you, Val.
Yeah, it's just, oh, you know.
I got, I got a laptop.
I mean, we can, we can, we can get it, we just can't get it tonight, that's the situation.
Right, yeah, it's, it's our fault.
My recollection about those conditions were that, you know, they addressed various areas of concern, and they're all, to one degree or another, part of the plan earlier approved. And in a, in a way, also, the applicant is sort of taking a pig in a poke if, if that isn't available. So it would seem, it would, it would seem that, that the absent conditions were a part of the overall approval process. And, and it seems to me that, that it's appropriate for any interested party to be able to see that before the board actually acts.
For what, what are my thoughts?
I think I, I mean, would I have gotten that in an email at some point?
It was, it was in April. There were two iterations. The first one didn't address the architectural. And it was, April tenth was when the meeting was, two thousand and fifteen. I went through all my files, I couldn't find it. And then I followed up.
Two thousand and sixteen, right?
Sixteen, I'm sorry, not fifteen, sixteen. And then, prior to the meeting on May tenth, when the plan was denied, I had updated that with conditions based on the progress we had made in that short interim period, and.
I'm going back to the beginning of time.
Okay, well, if you have it on your cellphone, I'm happy to entertain, I just.
Yeah, just please bear with us for a couple of minutes, see if we can find them.
It's very frustrating to me because it's, it's not just this application. We've been trying to get it corrected, and, you know, we're, we have a new email server.
What, do you think it was April?
The first one would have been in April, I would have sent it out to all the board members with recommendations, and then I updated it for the May meeting.
Yeah, I came, I came, I lit up in.
I would have filed them, so I don't belong to my phone.
I was gonna call you.
Right before the meeting, Val.
Yeah, I was grabbed at all.
Well, I didn't want to stop you.
Sure, I have it somewhere, but I don't know if I can get to it on my phone or.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have.
I'm almost sad, going back in time.
All right, yeah. But I sent you, I sent you a funny the other day.
It's Anderson application. What happens if you don't find it?
Diane. Well, I have different sources, I mean, John Ratigan has the files.
Oh, I would have them at the house.
And we would have them, it's just that I can't create them right now.
Can we do, can we do a conditional approval subject to the board? You know, ratifying the prior conditions of approval? Because then they don't have to come back with the individuals.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that.
It's May, then?
There were two iterations, the first one was for the April meeting, and the second was for the meeting.
So we're not able to find those, unfortunately. However, I think Val has just come up with a fair compromise. So Val, I will leave it to you to make a motion?
Ooh, nevermind.
Even better.
Well, those are the, that's the rendering.
Right.
Yeah, that was from the, the former house, we installed that one.
It's this one? There's three of them, but one, I'm not sure if one's. Do you think it would have been before that?
It would have been a, probably a Word document.
Right. Could be in the just.
Can I throw something out there? I see some of these abutters sitting in the audience tonight, who have been here for almost the whole entire process. And it sound, and they probably can recall if there's a condition that isn't being met, and I'm sure they would let us know of. I mean, if they're happy with the conditions that have, in the plan, and this new builder who's working with you people. Because it seems to me, most of those conditions, I mean, I have been brought up and brought up and brought up, and been worked upon, worked upon, worked upon, in these technical review committee meetings. I mean, they scrutinized extremely well that we shouldn't have to.
Was it part of the agenda?
Put it off again.
Right, I agree.
And they're sitting here.
I can get them from the attorney tomorrow morning.
We have them, I think Val has them, I have them at my house, I know I have them.
I would have them in my files, too.
So let's, let's, I guess we can stop, spin our wheels trying to find them, I think, and we'll have, just give Val a minute so she can develop her thoughts for a motion.
What was those dates, Diane?
It was prior to the April tenth meeting and the May eleventh meeting.
Is it this one, the architectural and aesthetic review?
Is there a second document attached to that? That was a letter from Donahue Tucker.
That's one.
Wouldn't be a PDF, it would have been a Word document. Draft minutes. Draft minutes.
That's a, that's a Word document.
It's, those are the minutes.
All right, you ready, Val?
That's it.
Want to take a try?
Okay, I mean, I'm happy to.
Yeah, no.
Find them tomorrow morning.
I'm making a motion to grant conditional approval for the application for site plan at 1R Grape Street, tax map U-two lot two oh-six in the R-three zone, to build four-unit residential condominium development with the associated parking utilities and drainage features, subject to the applica, providing a completed site plan and updating the plan submitted this evening. And further, subject to the planning board ratifying the proposed conditions of approval relating to the two thousand and sixteen application for the same property.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? So for, for everybody, what we're, what Val's proposing is.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, you said conditional approval, what, what are the conditions?
We're gonna, the conditional approval is subject to us ratifying the conditions at our next meeting, once we're able to develop those.
Once you're able to find the paper, what you were looking for, okay.
Correct, so that those conditions become part of this application.
I understand what you said, Janice, but, you know, I don't remember all the details of every meeting that we had last year.
Correct.
And I, I, you know, I certainly wouldn't want to just say, okay.
And this, I think, is a fair compromise, it shuts down the hearing, and they have a conditional approval. And we just gotta take out the old, you know, it's no fault of theirs that we don't have them.
No, I know, I know.
It's a computer.
I was just wondering, I thought that's what you meant, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, thank you.
We want to try to just treat everybody fairly, so we'll have an opportunity to discuss the conditions at our next meeting. But I, you know, I don't think there'll be anything new in there anyway, so.
No, they're, they're pretty standard conditions, for the most part.
So I think that's a fair compromise. So the motion's made, so any comment, questions by board members? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, everyone, for your patience, and thank the abutters for.
Your input.
Your input over the course of the last year, year and a half, thank you very much. I think it's resulted in a better project for the town, thank you. And thank you, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Is the applicant clear on what needs to be done with the site plan?
Yeah, we're talking about a condo site plan, like we're recording.
We need a site.
We need a site plan, period, with any package.
Yeah.
So, right, so it would be for reporting.
Yep.
And then you need to add all of this information on the site.
Right, that's why I think, as he, well, he's not conveying, he's not even taking.
It doesn't matter, it's any.
Yeah, I'll talk.
But not even for the condo, just a site plan review for the project.
Right.
Right, we don't have that in this package.
One sheet that just says site plan that we can record.
That's fine, yep.
Yes.
And then the note on it about the abutters, on that you can put that on the landscaping plan.
Yes.
And I think that was.
And I think Diane will add that to the.
Conditions, yes. So we'll try to get you the conditions, you know, a week or two before the hearing. So if you have any comments, you don't even have to show up, you know what I mean, hopefully we can.
Well, we're doing Google now, but.
Absolutely, it happens quite often.
We're still online.
Yeah, we're still on. Yes, okay.
Thanks, guys.
All right, excuse me? All right, we're still, we're still online, so let's give them a minute to get out.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, we're talking to Mr. Smith about cleaning it up anyway. So next on the agenda is a workshop, continuation of discussion on signage regulations and other zoning amendments. My understanding is we not gonna talk about those tonight, other than.
Okay.
Other than announcing that the town council did approve the zoning changes that the planning board had recommended, and we're in the process of updating the books. And everybody will get a copy of the new book when it's available.
Beautiful.
Nice.
New old business, chairman's report. I have nothing to report. Committee reports, anybody in on any committees that have any, it's been kind of a, went to doldrums, I think. Planner's report, Diane, I think there was one thing that we had about a stormwater, Great Bay seminar.
Yeah, and I just want to remind everyone, there is a seminar on Thursday, and it's gonna be held in the Newmarket Town Hall downstairs in the auditorium. And it's a workshop for Great Bay municipalities to address coastal flooding. It's being put on by the staff of the regional planning commissions. So that should be something that might, might be of interest to board members. Also, I have.
I'd be in the front row if I was gonna be here.
And it may not be too late to register, but to tell them, I would remind everyone, so if you're able to join us, that would be great. I also have a handout for everyone. We attended, we, and that included Peter, myself, and Dale Pike, we attended a meeting at the University of New Hampshire on the project that's ongoing concerning groundwater modeling as it relates to saltwater intrusion. And I have a little blurb here that Liz Durfee has asked me to share with you and with the public. And that is that the Strata Regional Planning Commission and the University of New Hampshire have developed a conceptual model to analyze the potential impacts of sea level rise on groundwater and drinking water supplies in Newmarket. UNH has completed the modeling, and the SRPCs in the initial phases of analyzing the results. There will be a plan set that will be developed, which will show and highlight potentially vulnerable areas of the town with respect to groundwater intrusion, saltwater intrusion. And there'll also be information about the project, adaptation strategies, and next steps for the town to move forward with some initiatives to address it in the future. So I wanted to share that with you. I think that's all I have at this point.
Did this come through, Diane, electronically to you?
It did.
Could you, hey, I submit it to us, because then we can blow up this map.
Okay, sure, I'd be happy to. Once, once I get my, all my, my group emails together in one package, I have to go back and redo all of my group emails, because that, they were all eliminated as part of this conversion. So I will take care of that in the morning, but that's the kind of stuff that's been going on, it's been very frustrating.
Oh, I, I know, believe me. And I want to just thank everybody, because I think that was a great compromise. I don't think it's fair to the client, I mean, the applicant, to have them come in and say, geez, we'd like to approve it, but, you know, our computers went down, so, I think that was a fair compromise. Anybody have anything else?
Just the regional planning commission meetings that I've attended, there was another one on Friday. Couple things, one, you may have seen, they're already starting work on Route one oh-eight, starting the utility line thing. So as far as I know, that's all moving forward, and the contracts are in process and happening. The other part of where SRPC is right now is the next, the early phase of coming up with the next ten-year transportation plan. So there's several documents probably that I should share, I'll have to get my other document thing in place. But basically, coming up with transportation priorities for the town would be a worthy document to have. One thing that came up in our meeting was, um, potential for a rail station on Beach Street.
Yeah. Wow. Because that property's available, the town has taken it, right, there's a lien on it.
Wow, that would be huge.
And there is some interest from, uh, several of the other commissioners that are involved in rail transit. Obviously, that's a huge study that would have to take place to basically say...
How big is the size?
Ridership, yeah.
Looking at ridership and commuter patterns and other things, but it actually opened up another whole discussion on additional, getting additional rail service. The Stratford Regional Planning Commission is, um, moving towards forming a five oh one C nonprofit corporation to help fund and, uh, work on some of their ideas in light of what's going on politically. And one of the things that, uh, was brought up was the potential for also having some sort of, uh, port authority or transit authority that would be similar to sort of what Pease created, except Pease is very focused on real estate development, and the other would be more of connecting, um, Southern Maine, Portsmouth, Stratford Regional Plan, Stratford in Rockingham County, with a, a more comprehensive, uh, transportation port authority, container shipping into the port, rail, improved rail access, both, you know, all the way through the core.
Sounds like a New Jersey, New York...
So, you know, it's sort of morphed into some bigger ideas, but, you know, there's also discussion of, you know, what may be potentially funding down the pike in terms of transportation and other fund, infrastructure projects and funding, so. Step one, really, is just to look at the basic roads, and since they really only cover state and federal highways, it's really just Route one oh eight and one fifty-two, um, but we should probably have a plan as part of sort of the master plan, that's just highway projects, state and federal highway project improvements. Probably the other one that would be the good case in point is with the industrial park and any improvements that have been talked about over time for the various sidewalk project that got rejected, which Steve was pretty unhappy about some of that, too. But all of that needs to be sort of thrown back in the mix and thrown back to the commission because they're going through a ranking process right now to select which projects are going to float up to the top as part of the next round of the ten-year plan. So I will just try to keep you engaged and informed on that. Great.
Can I ask you a question about the existing one oh eight project? The one that's going on in Durham, actually? You mentioned several months ago about, question about, there were some areas here where the guardrail was really tight for bicyclists. Did they ever...
They moved it.
They did, it's still some areas that are...
I was going to say, I was like, it's wider than, it's wider than...
It's wider, some areas, but there's still some areas where it's very, very tight, but that's just pretty much what's there now is what's going to be there.
Right. I, I mean, I think there's probably still some room to, you know, have comments and discussion on the Newmarket stretch.
Yes, yes, understood, that was, yeah, I was...
Certainly, you know, if there's any concerns there, they should be brought up now. Before, when they did that first stretch in Durham, they had put some of the guardrails in, and a whole bunch of people, a bunch of various commissioners, especially from Durham, were complaining about that, and they, they did pull some of them out immediately and moved them back, and it's supposed to be a five-foot bike lane, but there's places where it gets condensed, just because I think of the wetlands on each side.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Good.
I did want to, uh, report, I spoke with, uh, Rob Grant, who's the contact for the industrial park, and I guess they've finally reached some tentative agreement with DOT on improvements to the Forbes Road intersection, and they've agreed to put in the sent attorney lane.
Oh, nice.
So I don't know exactly what the plan will be, but, um, they're moving forward, and, you know, they have to meet their conditions by, I think it's May fifteenth or so, but they are making progress on that front, which is positive.
Great, so you just keep us up to date on that?
I will, I will.
Excellent, that's all good.
So then they'd have to come before us for, um, an extension?
If they can't get everything together by May or whatever the date, I think we approved it in November, so it's a six-month time frame. But that was a major hurdle, as far as I was concerned, so I'm glad they were able to reach agreement.
That's huge.
Yeah, that is good, so.
Anybody have anything else?
A motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Very good meeting tonight.
You got to call them.
Thank you, Diane. That's not your fault.
It's your new job, man, I'm out.